Record. Now, a white valley collapsed. It's the disaster. Rock and earth crumbled, a tsunami water bottomed.
This is massive destruction on a grand scale.
There is no record of this earth shattering event. Well, it's almost apocalyptic. It's like the great flood because of Mother Nature. She's old. Pantera is slow. This tropical paradise is a hotspot for tourism. Scientists enjoy pristine beaches, lush rainforests, and breathtaking sunsets. October twenty first, nineteen ninety three, a big explosion occurred as the earth began to crumble. A landslide is followed by a huge torrent of water. People should be terrified, the memory of the earthquake continues, while elemental forces smash the land's people. Whatever the fate is, it's not that we can't get the science to be considered. Explore George Orwell's book, this mysterious book, which could be the best prehistoric project. The thing that was that the sea, the water, the water as the black sea. The area occupied today by the Black Sea was once fertile land and held it by skill each farmers with a small freshwater made in the middle. That all ended around five thousand B.C. With one of the most disturbing events ever described in the history. We see the sea at the time. Uh, there were several acts that occurred in. But this was something I don't know, a long period of time. The earth between the metas and the lowland, what is now the Black Sea, suddenly collapsed. Ten cubic miles of water per day flooded in for three hundred days, transforming the land into a new one hundred seventy thousand square miles of sea. The force of the floodwater made Niagara Falls look like a tripping tack, flooding two hundred times more. And that would happen in a violent, catastrophic, cataclysmic event. Many historians believe that this event inspired the story of the great flood in the Bible. Records show that even more catastrophic event happened five million years ago, called the Sanctific Flood, and this was when the Atlantic Ocean burst through the straits of Gibraltar, flooded in the train. Scientists believe that this huge torrent of water cascaded down about half a mile, with a thousand times the force of the Hudson River. It effectively separated Europe from North Africa forever. Science journalists turn their wonders into footage trying to capture this similar type of event. Looking out this water rushing, it's almost biblical. The scientific researches have confirmed sources for evidence to support Arrow's great flood theory.
This could be a mass flood like we're seeing, but I don't think it is. The records show that there wasn't known what had happened in the region at that time. So something else must be happening here.
Earth scientist Alan Shapiro joins the investigation. He examines footage and his focus is on the ground touring of the whole of Earth. No use for water collapses. You can see this stabbing pattern. What's smooth is when they go in pit line operation. Mining is one of the main industries of the region. And much of this is large scale open pit line. One of the world's major exports is tin. And there are tin lines across the land. But how do we go from a tin line to a massive black side of the planet? Open cast mining operations often include a dam to keep river water from entering the exerated pit. Dam has been involved in many tragedies. On November two thousand fifteen, a dam in the northern part of Brazil has come and failed, unleashing fifty two million cubic yards of water on the northern slide. It was Brazil's worst ever environmental disaster. It's one of the largest three hundred and seventy five homes in ancient ancient people. But the sheer amount of liquid in this footage is way beyond any normal dammed up river. The humidity seems to be changing color of the water that lies beyond the lines of Earth's wall. Looking at the horizon from the video, you can see lots of buildings, lots of buildings. Building an open pit line so close to the ocean. How do you not see this coming? Have that mind where to go? This drug will never, ever come back. Details of this moment remain trudely missed. Aside from this incredible footage, there's no known method of this tectonic flood event. It is still not known if anyone was in the forecourt. The only evidence is a half mile wide cove where the mine used to be, a testament to the incredible force of water.
We found this great big pit mixed in the ocean, and guess what? Mother Nature is taking it back.
Now, of the light splinters the night sky. The chances of Americans doing this in the night are somewhat large. Watching illegal rocket on American soil. Other than here, one of these days, borders and nuclear weapons being unleashed. If you're on the grounds, here where this is taking place, you can set an incident. Tulsa, known as the Buckle of the Biden Belt. Tulsa was the capital of the U.S. oil industry for sixty years, and the modern city grew up around that belt. August twenty, two thousand seven. As a hot summer day draws to a close in the city, residents return to their homes and suburbs. Unaware that a woman made so many cameras. He's about to record a photo of the dead in the skies above them. You really got a lot of like kind of cockers being released on the coast. It's giving straight back up into the sky. Now, with this, we have to understand this is due to that. This is made of the society. The footage reminds science journalist Jeff Wise of a nineteen fifty seven experiment. They could have looked very similar. During the underground nuclear tests in the US, this underground test chamber was topped by a manhole cover. They blew up a nuclear bomb. There was so much enemy from this nuclear blast concentrating on one. And it was projected into the atmosphere such transplanted now. Currently, the work. The manhole cover accelerated to an incredible one hundred and twenty five thousand miles per hour, making it the fastest manmade object ever recorded. In the footage, it's spotted by one in two months and becomes the first manmade object going to Earth's orbit.
Twenty four seven. And at the state Capitol in Hartford, and it's been signed by President Potempor Martin Booney, and Speaker of the House Matt Ritter, and Secretary of State Denise Merrill.
The town of East Windsor hereby presents firefighter Sean Martin with this distinguished service award in recognition of your lifesaving service at the Carousel Apartments on August second, twenty twenty one. Thank you, Sean. Thank you. Anybody need to get the tones? Matthew Muji. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. All right, you want to come here and close to us? And who's this?
My son Noah.
Noah. All right. Noah, this is from the state of Connecticut. And, and the state of Connecticut, all the people in the state of Connecticut says that your dad is a hero. And we wish to be like him. He is just one of the most amazing people. Do you know he actually went to save a life? And he helped save a very important life of an individual. He was so brave that nobody else we know is as brave as, as your dad has. So we're so proud of him. So the entire state came with this. And then they talked about Lieutenant Matt Lucci of Enfield Fire Department. And we were recognizing him because he actually went and then did his heroic effort and saved a victim in a burning apartment. And, uh, in East Windsor on the second. Upon leaving a victim, um, upon learning that the victim was in a burning unit, a rescue was attempted upon extinguishment. Uh, you firefighter Sean Martin, Lieutenant Leo Shimanski, Jr., carried the victim out to safety where they were transferred east with their EMS, transported to Hartford Hospital, and immediately flown to Bridgeport Hospital. They survived and you saved your life, uh, life. Your dad saved the life that day. And I commend you for your bravery. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Given this twentieth, the twenty first day of October, twenty twenty one, and the state Capitol, it's been signed by the President Potempor Martin Booney, Speaker of the House Matt Ritter, and Secretary of State Denise Merrill. So, thank you. Noah, do I?
The town of East Windsor hereby presents Lieutenant Matthew Muji with this distinguished service award in recognition of your lifesaving fire rescue at Carousel Apartments on August second, twenty twenty one. Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you. Finally, Lieutenant Leo Semensky, Jr.
How are you? Good. How are you? So I've been pronouncing your name inaccurate, you know?
Semensky.
Pretty close. I was bringing the shy of this. We'll correct that. Should I read the old ones again? All right, again, Lieutenant, thank you for your bravery. Thank you for what you have done. Thank you for being an example. Um, it's truly heartwarming to learn and, and to think on your feet, you try and save yourself, but at the same time, put others before you. And, and that is a blessing that we all have, that all the people who sleep at night fall, and there are people who are awake, aware, and ready to help them if there's a need. This from the General Assembly official citation. It was introduced by me along with Representative Gerald Hall and Representative Jamie Foster. We are deemed hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly offers its sincerest congratulations to Lieutenant Leo Semensky, a junior of the Broadbrook Fire Department, in recognition of your heroic efforts to save a victim from a burning apartment in East Windsor on August second. Heavy smoke filled the unit, yet you firefighter Sean Martin located the victim in the bedroom. After extinguishment, you Sean and Matt Lucci of Enfield carried the victim to safety where they were transferred east Windsor EMS and transported to Hartford Hospital, and immediately flown to Bridgeport Hospital. Is the patient survived? You saved a life and we commend you for your bravery. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope of continued success. Given this twenty first day of October, twenty twenty one, at the state Capitol Hartford, and it's signed by President Potempor Martin Booney, and also Speaker of the House Matt Ritter, and Denise Merrill, Secretary of State. If you want to talk to me, Leo will be in the center and we can present both representatives. And I can give this.
And the town of East Windsor hereby presents Lieutenant Leo Semensky, Jr. with this distinguished service award in recognition of your lifesaving fire rescue at Carousel Apartments on August second, twenty twenty one. Thank you, Lieutenant. We have all of you working back up here for a group shot. And then we'll, we'll have representative for different fire department stakeholders with their honorries and the board.
We're going to be late to the drill.
I know. I noticed there's a hell of a good turnout. Should I move this out of the way? Oh, that'd be great. So this, this is going to be the more informal part of things. People would like to take photos with their, their arteries or, or with uh, the legislators or members of the board. We'd be happy to do that. But we really wanted to just make sure that we took this opportunity to commemorate um, something that does not happen very often, at least doesn't happen very often here. These guys performed an ordinary act of their duty on an ordinary day, but to somebody that, that ordinary act is very extraordinary. Um, and I personally hope that I never have to, to call for service uh, from, from either of these, any, any of these three departments. But I also firmly hope that if I do, they answer the call. And, and we're very grateful. Gentlemen, thank you for what you've done. Just to casually, you know, take your photos. Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Guys appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. It's going to be very proud of that.
That's fine.
I'm an empty room now. Apparently we seem like people.
Thank you.
I know, I see. Well, here we are now. Um, I would ask for a motion to go back into order and take up agenda item four A for slightly October seventh, twenty twenty one, regular meetings. Move. Move in second. Any discussion? All in favor? So I think everybody's had an opportunity to review the minutes. Any corrections?
I don't know, Peggy, if it's important or not, but on the first page of the gift speakers, you have Dave. I believe it was Dave. He ate some. We eat a, that's what we're in.
Oh.
Yes, sir. He was just, I think Dave was just logged in Zoom as Dave.
Yeah.
That's probably why.
Yeah. But.
Yeah, they, I just pick up what they come up with.
Okay, I just didn't know.
Do you want to?
If you don't feel there's a need, then it's fine with me. I just, you know, somebody looking at this for a year from now is not going to know who that is.
Okay. I just picked them up however.
Like we have Ruth and Joe.
Yeah.
Um, I have a motion to accept minutes as presented then.
I have a correction on page eight. Um, I actually made the motion for the added appropriation of thirty thousand, but in the motion, it did say hazardous household waste disposal. So I think we add that. As it is.
It's hazardous house, it's like the pesticides and. Others? How about a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
A move we accept the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes from October seventh, twenty twenty one. That's correct.
Second?
Second.
Made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say hi.
Hi.
I wouldn't care.
Uh, public participation, this is one of two opportunities for the public to address the board. Um, I'm going to start by asking if there's anybody here physically present who would like to address the board. Um, and then we'll turn to anybody who may have joined us online. In either case, if you could please give your full name and your address for the record, um, that would be appreciated. So is there anybody here present would like to address the board's like? There anybody online would like to address the board's like? So please unmute yourself, identify yourself by first and last name and address. There will be another opportunity later in the meeting, much later. This is going to be a. Onto board and resignations, uh, board and commission resignations and appointments. We have no resignations. We do have a couple of reappointments. There for different board and commissions, so we should do them individually.
Make a motion to reappoint Richard Pippin, Jr., inland wetlands and water courses agency, regular member for a term expiring November one, twenty twenty five.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Made in second. Any discussion? See none. All in favor?
Hi.
Oppose? So. Number two.
Motion to reappoint Leonard Norton, hearing officer of towing and impounding vehicles, regular member for a term expiring November five, twenty twenty two.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
I propose no. So.
Uh, make a motion to reappoint Carla Bagdikian, sorry, um, to the Historical Preservation Commission, regular member for a term expiring November fifteen, twenty twenty five.
Is there a second? Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? See none. All in favor? I oppose. So carry.
I'll move to appoint Alan Baker, pension retirement, a regular member for a term expiring November sixteenth, twenty twenty five.
Is there a second? Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? I would just point out that Slocken Baker has recently been named chairman of that board. So I'm glad that he's re-upped for another two weeks. All in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Oppose, no?
No.
While it's not a tie, I'll vote yes. Uh, new appointments. So first of all, there's a typo. Jim Richards is a Republican. He did check the Democratic box on the board.
Okay.
That was a hard question.
I checked that. I was surprised myself.
I make a motion to appoint James Seabird. We can do all these.
Mm-hmm.
One shot.
Yep.
I'm going to do them all in one shot. Um, make a motion to appoint James C. Richards, Russell Williams, Christina Posniak, Erica Jarrow, Deborah Williams, Karen Stavlone, through the Eastern Arts and Arts and Culture Commission, regular members for terms expiring April one, twenty twenty three.
April twenty one.
Twenty. April twenty one, twenty twenty.
Second.
Made in second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Oppose, no? So, point. Um, next is unfinished business, South Road Ownership update. Um, the only update that I have on that is that, uh, we're, we continue to move along on pace as I outlined at our meeting two weeks ago. Um, so we should still be in a position where we can dispossess ourselves of the property and reunite the homeowners with the underlying land sometime, uh, either by the first of the year or, or in January, if all of it continues to go according to plan. Um, that's been staffed at DPW, WPCA, planning, um, wetlands, no, not wetlands. And the town attorney have all been working on, on meeting those goals. So we are continuing to move along as that plan was laid out. Any questions or comments on that? Um, I'd ask that we postpone agenda item eight C.
Take a motion to postpone agenda item EC Broadbrook Fire memorandum of understanding.
I second that.
Motion's been made in second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say hi.
Hi.
Oppose, no? Uh, race grants. So, um, Mr. Kripin is here to talk about, uh, and I'm going to join him for the presentation to talk about the final report. Um, first and foremost, we do have an order of housekeeping business on that. So if you can talk about the one outstanding, um, report. I'll get some.
One of the applicants that had been initially ruled as not being in town appealed that. And after closer inspection and more documents were forthcoming, Gary's. Sorry, I don't have the full name. Gary's Connecticut one service. Gary's Connecticut Lawn Service Limited, I believe, fulfills the requirements and is eligible for an award of $10,000.
Gary's Connecticut Lawn Care LLC?
Yes, that will be the very last, last applicant before you and will close out all of the program.
So the recommendation is for funding of that applicant at what level, George?
$10,000.
So could I have a motion to accept that recommendation?
Make a motion to accept Gary's Connecticut Lawn Care LLC, participate in the Eastern Race 19, grant me all of $10,000.
Second.
Made in seconded, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? So that gets us to our final report. First and foremost, there, this is a unique opportunity, and so there are some thank yous that are owed, first of all, to you guys for making the funding available and taking the opportunity to reinvest in small businesses and nonprofits in our community. That is a big deal, particularly, and just pointed out by both Peg and George, in contrast to how this is, these funds have been handled in some other cities in the state. We are putting up a pretty impressive win for businesses and nonprofits in this country, so thank you for your support. Thank you to George. George and I have, we go a long, long way back and while sometimes when we've worked together, it's been a bit stressful, he has always made things fun to do, even in the most stressful of times. And this project was no different, it wouldn't have come out as well as it did without the expertise that he brought after, I'll say, many decades of, of experience at the state and federal level, now applying that to local government and businesses here. His, his inspiration, his experience was invaluable. We also had a young lady who worked with us on this project, who I'm not sure that you guys met, Lily Bluestein, Lily Bluestein. She's a high school student who has been involved with the Greater Hartford Foundation project here in town. She's in, she is an impressive young lady. She, I got the impression as we were speaking with her, she's clearly smarter than Jordan and I, but she, she brought a perspective that was valuable, she offered some constructive criticism at times that although he and I may be a little longer in years than she is, was still valuable to her. And she's got a very bright future in front of her, and we wish her well and thank her for her work. Lastly, I want to take a second and acknowledge the town staff that helped us to develop the program. There were a number of folks who really brought together their own, the expertise from their own silos to make a good project better, and the end result is in front of us. So, George.
Do my final remarks, check, we'll go through, well, I just, I should have gone first because I wanted to thank the board and to say that this is a triumph at night for the board. I mean, from the very get-go, I was focused on bringing this project in on a deadline. And we had some difficulties initially getting off the ground, we're still absorbing the material and the rules, not wanting to make any mistakes. So it was fraught with. A lot of tension, and even up to this week, any deadlines that were missed or anything that I didn't get to the board in time was my fault. And I apologize for that, but I assure you, it wasn't because I was dallying. I admire this incredibly visionary plan to employ what economists would refer to as a multiplier principle in managing the funds allotted to the town by the American Rescue Plan Act. What we're certainly hoping is that by this injection of capital into the community, that those folks employ others in the community and it picks up the pace of the recovery. You know, legislative bodies often want to make the world a better place, and they pass a bill or a resolution or a law, and then they leave it to the executive to figure out how that's all going to work. But this board did not behave that way, in this case, there was a bipartisan seamless process to get money into the hands of those that had been damaged quickly. And it is to be praised and admired and emulated across the state of Connecticut. The town revealed its character through the narratives of the victims of the public health emergency. And it's fitting that this happened on the same night that you are recognizing those fearless men that run into and women that run into burning buildings when everyone else is going the other way. Because duty and compassion and resilience and what used to be known as simply Yankee ingenuity, a true tough fighting spirit. All of these qualities jump off the pages of this report. And. As a result, East Windsor's small businesses and nonprofits did not pull the covers over their heads and whimper, they fought back. And so the leaders should be town, you leaders should be proud of your town, and the town should be proud of its leaders. It has been said that to enumerate some is to exclude others, but please indulge me for a moment as I was greatly moved at the end of this when I read the report in its entirety. And a few examples, the restaurant industry in general, for the heights they achieved to keep feeding your town folks, many of the customers being essential workers at the end of a long shift. How the, this industry that had a lot of skin in the game felt the brunt of the attack on their businesses first, and they felt it hard. They had to change their business plans and their method of delivery and had to be creative on food transfers and pickups, and they did it admirably. A childcare business that knowingly kept running at a loss, inviting financial ruin because the children she cared for belonged to the essential workers that were braving it for the town. A laundromat that served the vulnerable community 24/7 with all the attendant problems and difficulties of serving that community. Because she felt the folks were entitled to the simple dignity of clean clothes during a pandemic. And finally, the one case that tugs at my heart, as a former worker in the Connecticut Department of Agriculture and the USDA, a farmer, after battling all the vagaries of nature, the insects, the weather, too much rain, not enough rain. He had to abandon his sweet corn crop in the field because of a lack of labor to harvest the crop. Yet he just personified a peaceful stoicism. You did good, and you should be very proud. Thank you.
So. Charlie, can you, can you move the video box? Just minimize that? No, yeah, see the little minus sign right there? Okay, so this is the timeline that walks us through what the project entails. So in March, the federal government approved the American Rescue Plan Act, which translated to a little more than $3.4 million in federal money for the town of Swinton. In April, the board of selectmen approved a use of a portion of those funds, ultimately about 1.1 million, for the establishment of a small business nonprofit grant, which we are calling the Erase COVID-19 Grant. That same month, we issued an RFQ for grant administration, for grant administration consultation services, and that's ultimately what brought us George. He was selected in May, and later that month and into June, George and I worked with town staff to develop program criteria and recommend them to the board of selectmen for implementation. In July, we launched the application window with a press conference to feature Senator Blumenthal and Congressman Larson. At that event, Senator Blumenthal actually said, this is specifically what Congress had in mind when they passed the act. So that was a good start, a good indication that we were off to a good start. In July, we started to perform the reviews of applicants that had come in, that picked up more in Ernst in August after the deadline passed. And that's when George really went to work and reached out to the applicants that had made their submissions to provide, to solicit clarity on their applications anywhere that it was necessary, because this board's marching orders to him were, help people get to yes. Rather than having a government program that says that you didn't initial properly on page 13, so you're out of luck. We actually actively engaged with the applicants to make sure that we were able to provide assistance to them. By September 2nd, the first batch of awards recommended for funding by George were approved by the board of selectmen. A subsequent round of approvals was, was performed on September 16th. As of this moment, there are only two checks that have not yet gone out, one that has been previously approved and one, one that was approved this evening. So we have put 1.6 million dollars and, or 1.06 million dollars into our local economy to help our businesses and our nonprofits.
Outreach was. Challenging, there were difficulties getting through the fog of life to people while all this was coming about. And. Earned media is just that, it doesn't just happen, you have to work, work to get it, and the first selectmen spent quite a bit of time talking to the media. And that earned two stories in the JI that were commented on, many of the applicants told me that's where they first learned about. The press conference with Congressman Larson and Senator Blumenthal was unique because very rarely do you get such confirmation of legislative intent. That was exactly what Congress wanted, and when you read the document, the final rule in its entirety, it's compelling in that it was directed to vulnerable communities that were damaged by the public health emergency. The effort was to get money in their hands quickly. You folks have already distributed that money, there are other towns that are still thinking and strumming, strumming their fingers on the table, trying to figure out what they're going to do, and you already have the money in their hands. That is, I think, just a phenomenal achievement. The town's social media page was employed, and it was there to refer people to. Over 350 applications were mailed out to. Perspective customers, so to speak, and that was followed up by the first selectman actually hoofing that, putting feet in the street, and that was clearly the most effective method. Because he visited 65 businesses, 41 of which applied and were funded. So it was a very strong outreach, and yet unfortunately, at the end, we still heard from people that they had heard of it too late. So I don't know what more could have been done with outreach, without spending, a lot of the goal of this was to do as little or spend as little administrative overhead as possible in delivering this money. And without a very expensive radio or television cable type of campaign, I don't know how you would have done. So I think the effort, it reached the level that was needed, I would search in the future for more ways to try to do outreach. Moving on to the methodology, I won't dwell too much on this, it's self-explanatory, and you folks worked with me during the whole program, so you kind of know how it went down. We looked at the final rule, we figured out where we wanted to. Put our strongest emphasis. The application form could have been more on point in hindsight, and that would have saved a little time, but as the first selectman was constantly telling me as we were doing this, that we were flying the plane while we were building it. So kind of toughen up and figure it out, George. I engaged with those applicants and spent a lot of time on the phone, allowing people to vent about what they had been through, and that was a cathartic experience that really moved me as I was doing this, and made me want to fight harder for them to get to those awards. And then we arrived at the recommendations, and you folks dealt with those recommendations swiftly, which is all that I could have ever asked for. So and then we followed up on some, some last minute loose strings that were out there, we cleared those up, and we got to the deadline.
So looking at the awards and where the money went and how the money went, there's a couple of ways to look at it. We looked at the available data that we have in a number of different ways. Applicants were clustered into sectors based on commonalities and the services that they provide. So when looking at the, when looking at women-owned and minority-owned statistics, the information is predicated on self-reporting, so the information is only as good as what was provided to us, it was not, nor could it have been independently verified. So as you can see here, awards were spread over a wide spectrum of sectors, 13 in all, with no sector securing more than 17% awards. The highest percentage of awards went to nonprofits in the community, and the lowest went to hotels. The diversity of awards by sector is not something that was done intentionally, but I think rather it represents that the economic effects of the pandemic have been felt broadly across many types of businesses and organizations in our community and likely in every community. So most applicants requested and were ultimately approved for the $10,000 upper limit that was allowed under the terms of the grants. Because of that, the dollars largely, although not universally, correspond with the number of applicants per sector. Agriculture, home improvement, nonprofits, personal services and retail, all had awards in amounts other than the program maximum. What really jumps out while looking at this page to me though, is the five most funded sectors, food and restaurants, home improvements, nonprofits, personal services and retail. Arguably, those were the sectors that were most impacted by sector closures required at the height of the pandemic, and I think what we're seeing is a representation of that in the applicants and the awardees. So according to the US Census, East Windsor has 899 businesses, of which 416 are considered to be women-owned. That's a total of 46.3% of businesses in our community are women-owned. This is above the 44.1% of women-owned businesses in Hartford County. The percentage of women-owned business awardees under the grant tracked very closely to both our local and county-wide percentages at 43.6% of applicants. That number is of course exclusive of nonprofits, because there is no way of determining gender ownership on a nonprofit, same thing with minority-owned status. Women-owned businesses awarded, awards accounted for 20% of automotive awardees, 33% of distribution awardees, 35% of restaurants, 8% of home improvement awardees, 33% of manufacturing, 67% of professional services, and 53% of retail establishments and 40% of venues. Minority ownership. 19.4% of grant awardees went to minority-owned businesses in this country. This exceeds the 16.4% total for minority-owned businesses in the community. 50% of the arts and entertainment businesses receiving funds were minority-owned, as were 33% of the distribution sector recipients, 24% of restaurants, 8% of home improvement businesses, 19% of personal service recipients, 17% of professional services, 20% of retail establishments and 60% of venues. So you get a sense of where the funding went in terms of women-owned and minority-owned. As well as, as lining that up with comparable statistics in the, in our region. So where did the funding go, and what did it do? Use of the funds, as we elected to do, works basically like an insurance policy. Our program was set up so that if you could demonstrate a past harm, we would seek to make you whole. The interim final rule didn't require a prospective look at funding use, but it's something that we requested as part of the W9 in the contract, so that we could get a sense of where the money was going to, what it was going to be used for. That had to be able to show that they had some sort of negative economic impact, and that's it. So as you can see from the color coding above, the response broke down into effectively three different tiers. The most common tier, which is shown here in blue, mostly represented tangible improvements or physical improvements that, that business owners or nonprofits were seeking to make. Reading the responses that were submitted by the recipients, this group was focused on the future, and they were, they were making sure that they were prepared for the challenges that were coming next, it's another flare-up of the pandemic, another unrelated pandemic, or some other future challenge. Another unrelated pandemic uh or or some other future challenge. They were seeking to make sure that they were fortified against that. And that's what they were using their awards for. The second tier, which is shown in red, uh mostly was mostly driven by uses that allow recipients to catch up. Uh many of these folks had to take on debt or reduce staff and or even forego a salary themselves. Uh in order to keep themselves afloat and they have indicated that they plan to catch up on those things using uh those funds and that second. And the third tier, which is highlighted in yellow, was typically comprised of the nice to have stuff. Um here recipients indicated an intention to get back to things that they would have done in a pre pandemic sense, but because of the challenges. That were imposed by the pandemic, they simply weren't able to make those things a priority. Um so that's that's a breakdown of of what the indications were in the uh responses that were submitted on that. And these are just a couple of quotes from some of the recipients that I think really make some points that that we wanted to emphasize. The first is from Betsy DeWolfe at work in Platte and she said, for those who can't read it. Um that the grant money will be used to pay an East Windsor company to provide much needed sand mulch and playground mulch to existing playground equipment areas. Betsy uh Betsy's explanation of her intended use highlights the ripple effect. That this project has had in the town of East Windsor. She's using grant money from us to spend more money in the town of East Windsor, which means. Effectively, we have had an opportunity to spend that ten thousand dollar grant twice. That is a good return on investment. The Trolley Museum indicated that as long as eh eh as we along with so many other businesses in town start to recover from the COVID nineteen crisis. The grant will help us to do some of the work that we need to do to get things back to normal. This assistance comes at a time when we are embarking upon a major redevelopment program and we assure you that it will be put to good use. They've indicated that they are now thinking about how to move forward rather than just hanging up. That forward thinking view is an encouraging one and one that we hope is shared by many of the recipients of this of this program. Sunny's House said that we believe that this grant will significantly help us to continue our operations. And will help us, the staff and our customers to stay safe during these challenging times. We enjoy being a part of the East Windsor community and appreciate this opportunity. So they're they're indicating that the grant will help to keep them going and will allow them to further ensure that their staff and their customers are safe. Which further solidifies their 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 presence as a business in town. And the last one I wanted to highlight is from Septicology who said. As a recipient of the East Windsor Race COVID Grant, Septicology intends to use the funds. To strengthen and build our businesses as well as our commitment to East Windsor. Any funds will be used to help purchase and remodel a commercial property here in town. This new property will allow us to expand our business and grow our team past the eight full time employees that we already have. So Septicology is further investing in their local business and deepening their roots in the future in their future in East Windsor. That's exactly what we were trying to get. We wanted, uh it's cliche for me to say this, not gonna say it so many times a day, but um this program and the results of it. Demonstrate that East Windsor was to be partners with our businesses and our nonprofits in their success and in their recovery. Um and in this instance, we were actually able to put our money where our mouth is. Uh that is, that is a tremendous thing. Good. Questions or comments?
I just want to say thank you to George for all his efforts on and helping us to get this project on going and finished. Um without your assistance and your your abilities, we wouldn't wouldn't have met those deadlines even though it was up to that one. And personally, I want to thank you for putting up with my questions um on a almost regular basis. Um just because it's me, uh and thank you for, you know, being the professional that you were and. Help me out with those questions.
Thank you. That's very gracious of you.
Yeah, so I I just want to highlight um as well. I want to thank Jason for his tapping his network, bring George in. Uh that was a key moment in this whole process and to have George here, Mr. Kribda, uh with all the. Experience that you bring was so obvious. You knew what you were doing and it gave me a level of confidence that we were heading down the right path. And doing it the right way and that especially was kind of ironic today as I was. Perusing the report in my packet and then I I took a break to read the current. They were talking about how the CARES Act uh in some towns allegedly was misspent. You know, some of it down at the casino and here, there and everywhere and the FBI making arrests and stuff. It's it's a big deal when you get federal money and it's a it's a big deal when you do it wrong and we not only did we do it right. Uh but we did it quickly and and it was because of you guys. Uh leading the way that that we got it done the way we got it done. It's really. Um one of the the more gratifying things that I've been involved in in the last two years. So thank you both.
Thank you. I I also have to say I took a hard gulp when I read that the FBI was gonna be. But I felt confident that I had worked very hard to document everything and and put everything in writing and and copy everything and. There are three volumes of my notes that are in the first selectman's office as a backup. To everything you see here.
I was thinking, come and get it, boys. It's all.
Having worked for the federal government.
Just like to echo Alan and Maurice's comments and thank you both very much and George, you clearly put your heart and were very passionate. In your work and that made a big difference. So thank you.
Very strongly that you folks were putting your neck on the line to return this money to the taxpayers. And I was gonna make sure that they got every dollar that they that you intended not to get. So I I appreciate the. Those comments.
So if there's nothing further, um I'd ask for a motion to accept the final report and we will terminate the program.
We'll hope that we accept the final report and terminate the program.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
All of their help and hope for you with such a good progress. But also being there and um somebody listening to you and asking that question. And relay relay that in such professionalism so um. I just want to put that out there as a comment. We have great staff and. East one very appreciate it when something like this happens, especially when you go out, when you. Visited, visit different locations in town and people that are recipients of the grant. After they approach and say thank you very much. You don't know what it means um that you got this money. So. Uh for this to you, Jason, the thing you did to get this off the ground.
Well, we we do have a good staff. We had we had a gentleman actually drop off a dozen donuts today for town halls got just because of. The experiences he's had coming in here. Um unsolicited to showed up. Why didn't you drop him off right in my office and said, I want to make sure he gets the staff and you know, he shared his experience and that's. Your sentiments are right on point. Um okay, so. Now we're gonna move on to uh the last item from our last meeting that we need to take up, which is a discussion of the annual meeting top, right? The annual town meeting. Um we still haven't settled on a date or a topic, Charlie. We talked about this and and parked it effectively. Um until you got back and had an opportunity to weigh into. Um the the idea that was put out there last time, I actually really like. Um is um to to do a a meet and greet with town staff. Uh because there's been a fair amount of turnover over the last few years and there's a fair amount of elected uh. Folks or those folks who may become elected. Um who uh probably don't know who they are. So that's that's one idea that's out there. If any, and I. Wanted to make sure everybody had an opportunity to think about that over a couple a couple of weeks and see if anybody had any other ideas. Anybody have anything else?
Still like it.
Me too.
Uh okay, so how about a dates?
Is that date for the annual reported that you have charted?
It's been done before the end of December.
Monday before the last Friday.
No, there's nothing like that. But we we typically do it later and earlier because we want to make sure we have the financials done and the auditor. Depending on the year may not have a rate. So, you know, if we're gonna do it on Thursday, which I if we're gonna do a meet and greet with staff, it makes sense to do that on a Thursday. We would have an informal meet and greet starting at at six or six thirty or something like that. By by charter, town meetings have to start at seven thirty. So so we would have to do the business piece of the annual town meeting, which includes. A couple of pro forma resolutions that that allow acceptance of DOT grants and borrowing on behalf of the town. Uh acceptance of the annual town report. That has to happen during the business portion, which would have to start at seven thirty, but. I'd like to uh maybe like a holiday meet and greet thing for the staff um starting maybe around six. So. That so Thursday being said, that leaves the sixteenth, the twenty third or the thirtieth. Um I think the second is too soon, particularly in terms of the timing of the audit and that's giving holiday. Um I don't know if it would be ready by the night maybe, but I prefer to push this later in the month because.
Sixteenth is the day.
Sixteen?
Yeah. Cause our regular meeting schedule would be the second and sixteenth anyways, right?
Yeah, if we wanted to do this on a regular meeting, typically we don't.
Oh.
We can. So let's let's calendar it for the sixteenth then, and if there's a problem with publication of the report. Um I'll circle back with you guys either at a meeting or via email and we'll push it. And if we if we did have to push it later than sixteen, we'd prefer the twenty third or the thirtieth. Okay, so so. Well, you know, I mean, I don't know when you start your shopping, but if it's on Amazon, it should have already. So we'll we'll.
I've already celebrated Christmas on its way there.
Oh, um so we'll do the um we'll do the sixteenth and then we'll target the thirtieth as a uh back update. Okay? Uh next up is another presentation of the folks who have been working with the Capital Regional Council of Government have their uh. I'm gonna say draft final report, but it's only draft until we accept it, right?
Yeah. Draft until we um receive other public comments and then, you know.
Okay, so it still is in draft form. Okay, so to present our draft uh final report on the Route Five Corridor Study. I'd like to introduce uh Claude Pimby. Did I say that right?
Yes.
And I I'm sorry, I don't know your new teammate.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much. Um. And we are here to uh present uh draft uh Route Five Corridor Study for and doing this in plan. That we've been working for four years now, almost. It was supposed to be two because of the COVID and everything got a little longer. Give you a little bit of context. Uh we started towards end of uh twenty seventeen. And then uh we held multiple meetings uh with the public, lots of public interviews. Uh we went out to the town uh the meetings, fairs, festivals, and then. We had advisory committee here, met up with the with the town staff, business people and and um. Local stakeholders. So we ran multiple meetings uh with them and we came out uh. Came up with some recommendations. Uh to relieve traffic congestion um on Route Five and this corridor. Along with some land use uh for, you know, going future. In next twenty to forty years, what we can do to make it better. So we have the draft recommendation plan now and it's out to public comments right now. Until November first. Uh we didn't print the report today because it's still in draft, so you can view it online. Once it's finalized, we'll have multiple copies brought here, libraries and so on.
It was in the draft was included in their package, so they have it.
Oh, yeah, okay. So thank you. So uh Nick is going to present the recommendations today to see, you know. What we have proposed and then it's been vetted by DOT and the advisory committee. So um. After the presentation uh either now or right around after public comments. We'd like to request uh the endorsement from the town uh Board of Selectmen. Uh the reason uh that we want to do it around this time is we if we put that in the final report going to. Crop Policy Board and then the DOT. It leverages the report, you know, because town accepted it as a. As a good report, say. So uh before that, I'd like to thank you um the town for, you know, make us with this such a wonderful moment as occasion today. We appreciate our first responders. And we barely rarely see that, you know, we see them being peril every day, but we really appreciate them. That was a good time. Thank you very much. So I'll hand it to Nick to go through the presentation and ask any questions that uh in response to any questions you have.
Give a slight attention. Oh, that works. All right. Good evening. Uh you're gonna get started then. So this is presenting the results of the Route Five Corridor Study.
Yeah.
Yep. The study, uh as Pramod says, is four years long, but I'm gonna summarize it in about five minutes here. Right on. First off, the study area includes all of Route Five within East Windsor. That's town line to town line. Uh the corridor study has two main goals. One is evaluating the safety congestion and transit and bike mobility. And the other one is looking at the future of the corridor. Uh we want to be able to serve the corridor in its future uses, uh which may or may not be different from what we have out there today. Next, please. So the schedule is a very quick one. Uh go to the next slide, please. We're already at the end of the project. Uh we've been through a lot of this. I met with many of you uh during the advisory committee meetings and stakeholder interviews. And now we have our final implementation plan ready to go. Next. So the first thing we did was look at the existing conditions. It's pretty straightforward. Basically, go out, get a feel for the corridor. Talk with first responders, see where any trouble spots are. Uh talk with stakeholders up and down the corridor, business owners, um school principals, just learning what the issues are. Um and then after that, we did an analysis of the traffic performance of the corridor. One of the results of that traffic analysis was finding out the loop detectors of the traffic signals were broken. Uh so we had a quick um improvement to get those replaced with video detectors. And actually, the the Connecticut Department of Transportation, they're um. The Transportation Management Center has confirmed that the average speeds on Route Five have improved since we installed the new detectors. So that's already seen benefits. Next, please. And we moved on to future conditions. So for this, the the hardest part was figuring out what the future of the Route Five Corridor is going to look like. Obviously, we can't, we can't know exactly what's gonna be out there. Uh the MMCT Casino is a good indication of. The potential changes that happen, especially throughout a four year project. So what we looked at was a few notional sites along the Route Five Corridor. All the way from town line to town line that look like spots that are ripe for development. And with the help of our advisory committee, we were able to um predict what sort of development might. Be best suited for those sites, whether it's restaurants, retail or industry in a lot of these cases. And then we took that and put it into a sophisticated travel demand model. And figured out what the changes in traffic volumes would be if we went all the way through and built up the corridor. However, we also looked at just the background growth uh that'll happen regardless of whether we put new buildings on Route Five or not. And we looked at those developments that are already scheduled to be built or have recently been built. Next, please. Those potential land use changes, these are the the seven sites that were targeted for. Um highest development along the corridor and these were included in what we call our build um alternative. Next, please. So on to the recommendations. Uh we have our vision, goals and objectives. The vision you can read here is create a multimodal transportation system that supports continued social and economic growth in the Route Five Corridor. Our goals are to ensure safe and consistent vehicular, pedestrian and bicyclist traffic flow and access. And to establish bicyclist, pedestrian and transit options to enhance mobility choices. By providing equitable levels of access to affordable and reliable transportation. And our objectives, I'll go through these one by one because they're pretty important. Number one is providing turn lanes at all intersections on Route Five. And the big reason for that is safety. If you can get people out of the flow of high speed traffic when they're waiting to turn left or right. That has a major impact. Um and it's an economic as well as a societal impact. It's also a relatively low cost improvement uh that can be done relatively easily with the forces we have available. The second one is providing what we call level of service D or better at all signalized intersections, just like school grades, level of service goes from A to F. Where A is basically conditions you only see in car commercials and F is gridlock. Uh the the general trend is to have LOSD or better um in relatively congested areas like this that are well developed.
Oh, with the afternoon.
Oh, LOS is level of service.
Level of service.
Level of service, yep. Uh the third one, minimize queues between intersections. As anyone who drives up and down knows, you. You get stuck in a queue that's a good thousand feet long. can get stuck in a queue that's a good thousand feet long, uh, could be looking at a queue that's caused by three signals down and it just tends to back up because the volumes are so high. Provide transit service to key employment sites in the corridor. Uh, when we started this study, there was only one bus route and it only went uh, one, once in the morning outbound from Hartford and once in the evening inbound. So we have recommendations for improving transit service here. And finally, providing bicyclist and pedestrian facilities on Route Five on at least one side of the street. We want to make sure that people can make it through this corridor on foot or on bike, regardless of how comfortable they are. Um, we want to have a facility where school kids can go to East Windsor High School, where people who live in all the residences along Route Five can feel safe traveling up and down if they want to go to the businesses um, downtown. And thank you, next. So first off with the bike and pet recommendations, these are relatively straightforward and relatively low cost. Uh, we felt that putting in a side path would be the best choice due to the high speeds and volumes on Route Five. A side path is basically an eight to ten-foot wide paved path next to the roadway uh, that can be used in both directions by both bicyclists and pedestrians. This would also be done in tandem with including sidewalks and better pedestrian signals at signalized intersections. And potentially not in this study, but as an adjacent um, improvement, a bicycle and pedestrian path along the Connecticut River. Next. As for the transit recommendations, the the biggest recommendation here is to extend Route Ninety-Six and provide better stops throughout the corridor, um, as well as Route Twenty-Four, which uh, goes into Windsor Locks over there. Our recommended stops are shown as uh, blue rectangles on that diagram. Next, please. Uh, for the other improvements, which are mostly roadway related, we've broken these into short-term improvements, which are things that we could do right now to have a big impact on traffic flow. Things we could do in the midterm as development continues along Route Five to handle these future needs. And then long-term, which looks at if the corridor gets fully built out as we envisioned in that build alternative, uh, what we would need to handle the traffic produced by those developments. Next, please. So as an example, I'm looking at the Route Five and Route One Forty intersection. North is to the right side of the page here, so Route One Forty goes up and down on that picture and Route Five goes left and right. As the short-term improvement, we would be recommending building the side path and sidewalks around the intersection, give people a better way to cross, so it's a pretty big and relatively unfriendly intersection currently. Um, and go up and down between the restaurants and residences uh, to the south. Next, please. As a midterm improvement, uh, with the corridor more built up, in order to continue to provide that level of service D at the intersection, we'd be looking at a double left turn northbound on Route Five, getting on to Route One Forty, and a southbound right turn lane on Route Five, as well as some general intersection improvements uh, that result from the widening. You have to change the signal timings to account for the revised geometry. Next, please. And for the long-term improvement at this intersection, we would be providing two northbound through lanes uh, through the intersection, which would allow enough capacity to handle all of the traffic produced by the developments to the north and south. Next, please. Another thing that I wanted to point out, we have these recommendations in the study all throughout the quarter, but one of the big ones is at I ninety-one interchange forty-four. Because one thing that we got a lot of feedback from was there was a lot of weaving on the off-ramps. If you're coming from ninety-one southbound and exiting on exit forty-four, you probably wanna get over to the right, something like three-quarters of the traffic is turning right on Route Five to continue south. Whereas the traffic coming from ninety-one north is generally split uh, between north-south and eastbound traffic. So the a couple ways of potentially solving that issue, one would be to build a flyover ramp to allow traffic from ninety-one southbound to enter that off-ramp on the right side and set them up in that right turn lane so that they don't have to weave across the traffic from anywhere northbound. Or another one, which is a more radical redesign, but has even greater opportunities for the town, would be to uh, basically rebuild the interchange and build a new connector route. They'll go up by the sports fields and connect to Main Street. Uh, that would allow better access to and from Warehouse Point, potentially allow some reconfiguration of the Route One Forty interchange, exit forty-five as well. And this would provide a new connection to add some redundancy to the street network. So this is something that we've talked about with Connecticut DOT. And of course, it would require further study if we wanted to actually pursue it, but at this point, it looks like it could potentially work out. Next, please. As for the price tag, this isn't a bill to the town. Uh, these these funding sources could be numerous, they could be from state or federal. And since we're looking at development, generally the developer of a large development site will bear part of the cost of the improvements related to the traffic generated by that site. So for the short term, that's mostly the sidewalk improvements and making minor changes at the intersections. We're looking at six-point-two million, that's in twenty-twenty dollars. Moving out to the midterm improvements, which would handle some future development along Route Five as well as the background growth, that's fourteen-point-two million along the entire corridor. And that accounts for inflation up to twenty-thirty because we wouldn't be building this right away. And finally, the long-term improvements for the full build of the sites, that comes out to twenty-four-point-three million and twenty-fourty dollars. Thanks, please. For our next steps, as Promote said, we're currently, the report is currently out for public comment, that'll be ending on November first. We're here with you tonight to look for your endorsement of the draft report. And after that, it goes to the Prague Policy Board uh, for their endorsement. After that's done, it becomes time to turn these studies into projects and start looking for funding sources to make these improvements and to uh, make East Windsor a nicer place, especially Route Five. So thank you, that does it for my presentation. Are there any questions?
So so I'll start off with one, and then we'll ask the board and then if the general uh, audience would like to ask after that, I'm happy with that, too. Um, so you you kinda hit on one of the points, which is who's gonna pay the bill, and certainly it's not gonna be us, um, that's just beyond our scope. Um, but does the timing of this, assuming that that the comments come back and that the endorsement from this life and happen sometime in November, preferably the first week in November, because the policy board meets on like the sixteenth, sixteenth, I think. Does that allow us to effectively have that shovel-ready project on the shelf waiting for like a bipartisan infrastructure bill with a billion dollars to come ring or trillion dollars from where you go?
It's a good question. It hasn't gone through design yet. Right now, we do have plans, but they're just basically, you know, laying a strip of gray on top of aerial photos. So it would it would go through a higher level of design, especially for any river crossings. If you need to build new bridges, it takes a bit of extra effort. But we had a similar effort for Prague in on Silver Lane in East Hartford, uh, where it was identified that we could build some sidewalks alongside Frenchfield Field. Uh, and that took about two years, say, for us to get funding, progress the plans through and move into construction. So the the funding, if the federal funding was made available, we would put that toward design right away. Um, and potentially carry that through into construction. Do you have anything to add, Promote?
What? Some, well, we have federal as a state funding now, right, toxic funding, so if um, projects here uh, compete well with other projects that if they are, you know, sensitive for funding, then that that Nick mentioned, whatever uh, funding available for design and then then construction can be applied to that, yes. After the 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 report is ready, it becomes pretty much projects, so you have individual projects that interests or your sidewalk or your back path, so you can we can start exploring uh, if there is any uh, funding, you know, availability, like a TA set aside or any, there are multiple numbers of grants and then funding available, but we have to just go through the process. But uh, to start with, yes, the the report is the base. So when you go to DOT or Prague, yes, it's been, you know, approved by the town by by Prague and the President DOT has our plan to do the improvement. Then becomes a.
Proposals.
Questions from the board?
Bike.
Um, okay, so first off, what gets this moving and gets this in momentum, like take more congestion, more development? Or are we looking at this stuff happening automatically over the course of the next twenty, thirty years?
The idea is the short-term improvements are something that would help us today, that address existing needs like the lack of bicyclist and pedestrian infrastructure on Route Five. So those, there there is a need for them out there today. I think getting that done quickly would be extremely helpful, not just for the people that are already out there, um, but also for encouraging future developments to come in. Uh, a lot of them, for example, might be happy to have pedestrian access to and from the the housing nearby. Um, or better access to the freeway uh, through better signal times. Um, then for the midterm improvements, we don't have a a trigger to set those off because at each individual intersection, the needs are different. Ideally, for something like adding turn lanes at intersections, that could be done early on, um, because that is a safety issue. Uh, and the benefit-to-cost ratio for those added turn lanes is very high. When you get to bigger, more expensive projects, like potentially widening um, out to two lanes in each direction in the south part of town, obviously, things get more expensive and that's when you start ordering a closer look at it. And once you entail environmental impacts, um, we do have an awful lot of street crossings in the area, then you actually have to go through a lot more federal policy uh, to to feed funding into it. But the the short-term stuff, uh, that should be basically ready to go.
Okay, and that kinda goes into my next question is, the way you guys segmented this into different sections, you kinda segment the worst possible spot. You put a line right on the biggest problem spot on Route Five, and that's where it goes from two lanes going southbound to one lane. And you know, the two plans, the two segments, I can't really see what you're recommending to do in that problem area, which is right now in front of Park Site. Um, is that proposed to to maintain two lanes? You know, past the South Water Street section?
I actually attached a slide at the end of the presentation for that, so.
Okay, okay, great.
Wanna bring it back up?
Sure. Sure, and this is extensive enough for the two lanes.
Yeah. I could tell you the long-range plan is to extend the two lanes all the way down to South Windsor to match up with the two-lane section there.
Okay.
Um, short-term, we would look into extending it through South Water Street. Right now, obviously, the merge from two lanes to one is bad. I looked at the crashes there. There are so many people that are getting sideswiped. Uh, whether someone's stopping to turn left into one of the gas stations.
Yep.
Or does someone not pay attention because they don't realize the road narrows down to uh, to one lane?
Yeah.
Uh, go forward a few slides, please.
The 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 problem with that area is, yes, the left, which is supposed to be an illegal left turn. Um, and I've already brought that up with um, our police department. They're gonna look into that some more. Um, but the other issue is we have a lot of out-of-towners that come for Southern Auto and they aren't aware that it goes down to one lane. And and I think that exacerbates that problem.
So this this is looking at um, a relatively short-term improvement, which is widening down past South Water Street, uh, which would allow us to address congestion at the South Water Street signal, uh, as well as, like we said, giving them more room to merge from two lanes to one, moving that merge to a less congested area with not nearly as many driveways down there. Um, so this this would actually also help residents of the side street just south of South Water Street there. We had complaints from them that they had trouble pulling out their driveway.
Yep.
Yeah, so one nice thing about this is by adding a second southbound through lane and eventually a second northbound through lane, uh, we can reduce the green time that Route Five needs to get through. So the people that are waiting to turn either left or right out of the the minor streets will have bigger gaps in between those platoons of cars. So thi- this is a relatively midterm, and then if if you want, you could go forward a few slides and it shows uh, extending it all the way down in the future through Southern Auto and then to the southern end of the project area, which is right. These are still the midterm improvements. You can see the the highlighted area there. So that's looking at South Water down through Tromley, which is another traffic to the points we have. Two lanes. One of the big questions that came up during the advisory committee meetings is whether the Coe East Plaza High School site is going to remain a high school or potentially be reused as a different type of development. So we wanted to make sure that we could handle either eventuality.
Yeah, I can imagine.
Flip it through if you want. These are all just diagrams that are in the report. Sorry, the segmentation wasn't in a great spot, but yet one of our, one of our first priorities is extending that second through lane southbound, past Thompson Street and up to South Water.
Okay.
Excuse me, if you go to Prague website, you'll see in large in large version of these, so you can really look at the plane level, yeah.
And then I had two others. When you guys talked about dividing, you know, whatever cost for the, you know, the short-term, the midterm, those are gonna obviously um, compound as it goes on, right?
That's correct. That's why we included the the twenty-thirty and twenty-fourty as.
Right, right. Um, and my last question is, at what point does doing all this work lead to having to do work on One Forty? Because right now, you can't travel One Forty between Route Five heading east. Um, it it's very difficult. It's getting very congested and a lot of the people coming out of the side roads um, off of um, onto One Forty are are having the same issues that people have on Route Five. You can't get out at rush hour um, because there's just so much traffic uh, coming through there. And I wonder if making all these improvements doesn't do any good if we don't do something with One Forty, especially in the immediate zone between Route Five heading east, um, probably up to gosh, Vassell's Plaza, um, before it starts to really thin out. Um, and that's probably a good miles distance, something like, you know, One Forty stuff. We do, we really do. But I really think that doing these these things, eventually you're gonna leave that.
Yeah, great.
Flow on Route Five, but when you get to One Forty, you're gonna be congested again because the traffic on One Forty is backed up onto Route Five. And 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 first.
Yeah, it's understandable. Our study looked at the One Forty Route Five intersection itself and making sure that One Forty was flowing fine through there, but we don't look beyond that.
Yeah, it's.
At rush hour, it's it's not good.
This facility with One Forty upslope coming, you know, eastbound.
Yeah.
During winter and then, you know, separate conditions.
Yeah, we are. That section's not as bad between the highway or even the center of town coming up through, but it's after that because you're in two lanes and you're merging to one. And then after that, it's just a steady flow of traffic and it doesn't give any gaps because
Oh, my God.
It doesn't give any gaps to people trying to get out onto One Forty eastbound on the east side because this intersection is constantly relieving traffic onto One Forty East. So you never get a break. If you're waiting at like Winkler Road, the Trolley Museum, um, there is the light for Showham Road, but it's so quick that you rarely get a break to get out onto One Forty. This wasn't about One Forty.
That's all I got, so. I'm sure that's enough. Other questions to come? That's good inside of One Forty.
You had indicated on uh, exit forty-four, the possibility of a flyover.
Yep.
Is that a new document? Let me see it.
In what, um, we pick as a long-term because that has to be looked along with that in forty-five.
Yeah.
Because we have only a mile there.
Flyover.
Mile, so that will be studied separately, but it is there as just as a long-term recommendation. And um, I mean, the flyover itself, the bridge itself is but I think it's going to change as like a, you know, a regular interest. Two lights at two ends.
Traffic would come up to the road.
That's this, right?
The top one. Top one supply over the bottom one is the new connection.
New connection, yeah.
And then because of this new road, they could also take it and bring it over to.
Listen, my question about uh, getting shovel-ready.
So.
Where you gotta be if you wanna get grants and stuff, but I just wanted to say, this is kind of the study I've been waiting for for like at least ten years. Um, because as a former member or a resident of Warehouse Point, I I always used to notice, and I live right in downtown Warehouse Point, um, various people that, you know, rent a room down there that would be wearing, you know, Wendy's uniforms or Walmart uniforms or Big Y uniforms, trying to get from downtown. Trying to get from downtown up into that commercial space there and there's, it's like a game of Roger. There's no pedestrian infrastructure there whatsoever. So what I really love about this report is that it gives you a menu of how to get some of those chunks done on a piece by piece. You know, trying to do it all, gonna be difficult to get $12,000, $12 million, but, you know, you could get a couple of these things done potentially with a grant or two. And failing that, Transit Alternative 3 kind of solves that problem. Giving that loop of having the bus that goes, you know, around and around and around there and gets those people. You know, this links up or this plan, aspects of this plan links up perfectly with what we say we want in our P O C D. To have that village, walkable village, and then with what's going on across the river. As well as the Warehouse Point study, the drainage study, all these three things together, you know, really puts us in a good space. It's on us really to make something happen here. I mean, I think a lot of the groundwork done to get to the next step. And I think we really need to make sure that we focus on it.
Especially with the new lock station now being built, you know, soon. We have opportunity to connect the river and then find bicycle path or at least a walkway to connect to two towns.
Yeah, my goal is to get some of that money flowing this over the river.
Well, this will probably, you know, probably happen, you know, if the rail comes closer than that, if you have commuters be able to hop on bus and that train.
Yeah, and residents of Warehouse Point, which you are, you know, when I lived there, my wife and I would want to go to restaurants, we'd like to walk there. And we could walk to a couple that were right downtown, but if you wanted to go to, say, Pasco's or something, you're taking your life in your own hands. You know, and so those are just improving walkability improves your economic capabilities, I think. And I think they're some of the easier things in this report to get done.
Other questions or comments?
Question I have is ready answered.
Anybody in the audience here present having questions for the gentleman from Krav?
Yeah, Phil Hayes on 143 Ryce Street. I was on the Transportation Committee with Krav back when it started. It's a 29 charter bridge problem, that's like seven years ago. And I know that five of like this has to go to that Transportation Committee. And that early six million for startup for right here, which is good. Still have, that's the first step, is that correct? And that's pretty, pretty good, they were. And.
Run's out there.
I just, you know, see 140, the 140 situation that come up. And I know it goes all the way up to where this street comes out to 140. And at certain times, it's very difficult for you to take a left turn, you can probably sneak out right, but the left turn is difficult. And that's true, it should probably look at. And also, we mentioned a ramp coming off to go down to the sports complex, which we had. And for some reason, it was eliminated. I saw it had not. So that's all I have to add, is we do have to go to the Transportation Committee. So it's the sum of the best.
And then 6.4 million, that's for the all near term, so to break them down into small pieces. So some of them won't cost that much. For the entire near term improvement.
So in that committed that Transportation Committee, will you be looking for the entire project?
No, 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 no. If we can have like from one, you know, intersection to another, if you want to make the right turn for safety purposes. I mean, I mentioned to you while ago that some of these can be done when the, you know, Milan paved the road. So if we have right of way available, we can add another lane just to write right turn lane. Re-stripping kind of thing, yeah.
That's a concern on some of the study area is that the houses that are placed there predate a lot of regulations. So I mean, if you're taking 10 feet from somebody's lawn, you're gonna be a foot and a half until somebody's coming. There's, it's gonna, some of the tightness is unavoidable without taking the help.
But we're due to available and if we don't want to do that, I think that's opportunity.
Any other questions or comments from folks who are here?
Just curious, maybe the speed has increased the overall travel speed.
The average speed. So what that's looking at is basically the average speed of someone traveling through the corridor. It doesn't look at like how fast they're going at any individual point. But I don't have the numbers with me. It was something like going from 32 average miles per hour to 35. That includes that you're stopped at the signal, so the average is gonna be well below the speed limit. But basically, yes, there was a decrease in travel time through the corridor once they installed the new detection.
I had noticed a slight increase in speed effects.
Yeah. Yep, yep, it's made a big difference because previously the side streets were getting called unnecessarily. Since the detection was broken, the signal was basically acting in the blind. They couldn't tell if there was a car waiting to go. And as a result, it gave people a lot of reds when they didn't need them.
Another curious question. Will all those traffic lights synchronize at one point in time in South Windsor?
Yes, they're all controlled by the Connecticut DOT central system. So there's actually a computer running in the basement of the DOT headquarters in Newington that controls all those. They can make timing changes remotely. They don't have to come manually on the signals. I should point out though that the signals, despite all being part of the same computerized system, they don't all run coordinated together. Like the Route 5 and 140 intersection runs on its own cycle because it's so busy. It has a different cycle length from the rest of it, so that one can't be coordinated with all the signals south of it. And Tromley, in the morning peak, when students are arriving at the school, that one also drops out of coordination specifically to allow people to press the pedestrian button and cross without ruining the coordination up and down the corridor. But most of the time, yeah, most of the time they're synced up. Anybody else? Great.
One, five, two, four, seven, South Water Street. I live on South Water Street and they just took the telephone poles down, got the whole road open. We now have a right hand turn, a left turn. Which is, in two days, has made a noticeable difference. The people who live in those condos that have the problem are not going to see an improvement because now the traffic taking the right hand turn is increasing because there's nobody sitting there to take it up. That's gonna be an issue. But as far as having the road wide to allow for that, have made a remarkable difference in a very short, long time. And also, in the process of doing what they did there, it's really unfortunate that this had been completed by them because they did expand the roads slightly. And it would have been wonderful if you could have the summer member and then part of it to get those two lanes open. And they did expand slightly on the north roadside in front of Pasco's Condoms across the street, they widened the roads slightly there. And so I don't know if it's something because if they're still out there doing the work, if it's something you could jump on quickly to say, okay, wait, this stuff is still working up. The DOT is still out here doing stuff to possibly get that widened more in a quick manner. Because I know you can tend to take a long time, but since the work was already in progress, we're gonna break it, they could have just done it. But from the perspective of widening the road at those stoplights, no matter what road you're on, it makes a huge difference in traffic. It's something you should probably work out sooner rather than later. And also those turn lights, getting people out of the traffic, because it just doesn't make.
Thank you. I believe those improvements are being put in at the start of the major traffic generating. Yeah, I believe that's the case. So those would have gone through the office of the State Traffic Administration and then the developer foot's part of the cost for that. So it's difficult to change them once the permit's already been approved because then you're going back and asking for money. But I understand where you're coming from on that.
It may have been a view we already had the plan that when they came in and said we want to do this, that we said, oh, well, guess what? We would like to do this.
Right. Well, the good news is now we have concepts for the future, so additional development coming in, we'll know exactly what to ask for.
I'm gonna be brandishing this report ad nauseam over the next couple of years.
Fair warning, Tom. Any other questions or comments from anybody here present?
Tom Tellman, 23 Rasch Road. Question, the side path that you're saying for pedestrian and bicycle. How would that be divided from the road? So would be a barrier? Or would there not be a barrier? And how do you cross an intersection or a driveway that someone's trying to get out and waited for 10 minutes and now they want to go? And they don't see a bicyclist coming or a pedestrian? How do you handle that? And do you have some sort of breaking point to keep it from the road? So a car can't hit somebody walking or riding a bike?
So typically, in cases like this, we would have a five foot buffer, which is good for a snow shelf too. Obviously, you want flowers to have somewhere to toss the snow that's not right on top of it where people are walking. So that buffer provides decent amount of safety. If there is an issue and we do need to put a barrier in there, places where just put guide rail along the edge of the road, that might be done on the outside of curves, if necessary. But the pedestrian and bicyclist volume, while they are out there, I've been out there and seen plenty of bicyclists braving the road. And we do hope that more people go out there. It just isn't all that high. It's not like you're gonna have nonstop streams of bicyclists.
Oh, because you were afraid of it.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah. My weight won't go out in five.
Yeah, I was amazed seeing people in 50 mile per hour traffic out there.
Yeah.
It was really impressive.
But go back to Jason's problem, you're gonna have the same problem. If you take a five foot show an eight foot or a 10 foot bike path or pedestrian path, you're gonna be people's front yards, you'll be in their houses or something. So that's gonna be a crater, a little bit of a problem, drive through Pasco's.
So as for the crossings of the major intersections, anywhere there's a signal, we'd be putting in full pedestrian facilities at the signal, so you press the button, wait for the phase. And then you'd be able to cross and check it. So that would be the case of the Route 5 and 140 intersection, for example.
Oh, yeah, that's a suicide there.
Yeah, so we would be adding a diagonal crossing from the southeast. It's tough seeing everything rotated 90 degrees on a map like that. It's from the southeast corner to the northwest. So that would allow people to get across the intersection without having to zigzag across too late.
I mean, that'd be tremendous just for walkers, I think there is a, is there a pedestrian sign now?
There are currently really minimal pedestrian facilities there.
Yeah, I think there's, it gives you a chance to cross like 30 seconds.
If the Ted button's working. Other questions or comments from anybody here in the room? I'll turn to the folks who are joining us, who have joined us online, Anne, Joe, or Ruth, any questions or comments? Okay. So gentlemen, the next steps, you've given us a draft resolution, basically endorsing the plan. They're not gonna take action on it until after the commentary, right? So our next meeting is November 4th. Is that sufficient time afterwards or are we pushing it to the?
Yes, fourth will be, first is the, you know, new date. We haven't received anything yet, public comments, because it's been, most of things have been already addressed by, you know, during public meeting here. And then advisory committee meeting and whatnot. So if we receive anything by today and November 1st, we'll be addressing that right away. And that'll be part of appendix, so you can see, you know, what's been addressed. And then I can communicate with you November 2nd, see what we've received and then ask for your endorsement. And then with that endorsement, we will present that report to our Justice and Committee and then funds for in their meeting on, I think, for their endorsement.
Okay, so there's nothing further for us to do this evening than to take this. Thank you very much for being here for the clear amount of hard work that's done in this over four years. This is quite a lift.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
And the full of our point goes on the website if you want to look at the full presentation.
Okay.
And then more to listen to.
We added the report that you'd sent. It's now on our website too, so.
Okay. So there, sure.
Okay. Next is Next up is a resolution, an authorizing resolution for the acceptance of a grant from the State Homeland Security Grant Program Region 3. I actually, I have some outstanding questions about this. I'd like an opportunity to ask those of Chief Marco and Deputy Chief Hart. So if, I'll take any comments that people have, but I have, I've got some homework I want to do on this before we move forward. We have time. This isn't due until December 15th, so my cursory reading is this is just allowing emergency management to intercept or to appropriate funding for regionalized response projects. But it talks a lot about the custodians of the assets and it's not clear to me what assets or who the custodian is. Because I don't think that we have anything for a regional response, correct? So I have some due diligence I want to do on that. If there are any other comments, I take those back to the chief and the deputy. And we can take this up on the 4th.
You know, I remember when I was reading through this, it was very familiar and I can't remember if it was, we did this at the beginning of our term or if the last time we did this was my last term in 2011, 13. But we had those same questions about who owns those assets, but we did some.
Yeah, we did something similar. It was for it was a grant for fire service funding that came to emergency management that we. All that familiar, but I could be wrong. So at any rate, I just want to talk to Evan Roger. Any other points or outstanding questions?
Could you run a motion to table this?
Postpone it, please.
Make a motion that we postpone the application or the motion at the time this was reported, which means in regards to the State Homeland Security Grant Project.
May the second, any discussion? All in favor? Next up is a discussion of the American Heritage River Commission's recreational trails grants. I invite Mrs. Sherman to come forward. She's the author of the documents that are included in your packet. So she can explain what the project projects are that they're trying to do and what the process may entail. So Barb, you have as much time as you'd like and then we'll ask some questions and then we'll do our thing.
All right. So the American Heritage River members have been stewards of the trails in the state park. Part of our charge was that we organized 21 years ago, 22 years ago, was to provide recreation opportunities for the members. And so we've been, even though we're river people, the river is only accessible to us maybe May till September. So the other eight months, there's the trails. This particular grant application is to get us some money so we can improve the trails, add to the trails and improve the mud walks and bridges that we put on the trails. Because they're getting a lot of use and the woods breaking down or the river's moving it and crashing it. And so there's constant maintenance that needs to be done and that's what we're applying for. We are applying for it on behalf of the town, so it's the town that's actually doing this application. I've been at a flood trial all afternoon, so I missed an email from Melissa. Melissa was questioning the amounts. So on page two, she said, no, it's on page one. The amount of the total project is 7523. And her email said it didn't match up with page seven. And her email said it didn't match up with page seven. Page seven is just an example of how they want it set up. So you have to tell them what the tasks are. Uh, and who's gonna perform the task and what the timeframe is that you'll complete it. And then that's under seven and then the eight gives you an example of, so task one is gonna cost this much, this. So page seven has nothing to do with my grant application, other than it's a format of how it's supposed to be set up.
I don't think we're reading this, no, but that's just an example.
I'm sorry, can I tell you, Marie, my hearing aids are sitting on my nineteen. Had trouble all day today hearing people with your mask on. I didn't hear you.
I apologize.
No, 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 I'm.
How does one like me reading this know that this is an example? Cause it doesn't say example, because I was confused when I saw this and then I saw your. Actual numbers. Towards the end.
Because this is the second grant that I did, so that's how I know that that's what it's supposed to be.
Well, and now that you say that, you know, your your response number nine C attached and it references in number seven, it talks about attachment deed. Now that we're talking, I had the same confusion that that Melissa and Marie did, but now that you've explained it to me, I I I get, I get what you did.
Okay, no, um, and. Quite honestly, if you look at the bottom.
Yeah.
This, uh, was put together rather quickly. Part of it is two thousand twenty one. And then if you look at the next page, it's from seven eighteen, the previous one. So when it was put together, they just kinda. Cut and paste.
Well, that was that was my concern, that it was cut and paste and was cut and pasted correctly.
But for her.
It was cut and paste.
Deep cut.
Cut and paste by this this date. When they put this together. Um, we've had some money.
They absolutely did that.
They've had money for a bit of time and they finally just got permission to, um. Put them out there. So I think they put this together rather quickly because we were only notified the end of September and the filing deadline is November first, so. They did as quickly as they could. Um, but if you, if you look at the format on seven and then you go back and see. That I tried to match what they want.
Yeah, you did.
That'll go through. And the reason why the date for finishing, they give you two years once, if a grant is awarded. You have two years. So going on what the previous timeline was for the grant that we got for the walkway. We were notified the end of January that the award would be made. We had to then accept it. If we would, because it would reduce from what was a full amount that was asked for. And then you got notified that it, you had a number and you can't do anything. If you want to be reversed until you get that number and that didn't happen until May. No, June that time. And then you have two years from that time. So that's why two thousand and twenty four is down here. Because anticipating that this might happen. It would be in that timeframe, so. That's where that came up. Any other questions? So we have a lot of damage. Three hurricanes in a row. Um. Over fifteen to twenty inches of rain. Um, two or three, four bridges that were. Uh, moved. Uh, literally moved. One across the river, one up in a tree, one down in a ravine. Anyway, um. The members and volunteers hope to get some semblance of, um. The trails back in place for previous day hike, which is our traditional hike. Um, but this is then in addition to that. Um, there's improvement that we want to make and there's always going to be ongoing repairs to purchase. And that's pretty much what this is requesting. All right, so they're constantly working. There's a radio work party for Halloween morning and there'll be two more before the hike at least. Um, so the hike, the trail should be in decent shape for the hike. Um, but then this is going forward, improving and adding to.
So those those items that were flagged as, um. Being listed incorrectly in fact or not listed. So so we're in a position where we can go ahead and approve the fourth improvement by signature on this grant. Right?
Yes. Yes, if that was your only question, then yes.
Well, yeah, I'm good. Gentlemen.
I'm good.
Lady? All right.
Motion to authorize the selectmen's signature in the Connecticut recreational trails program grant information and application. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? I'll decide a clean one tomorrow. I marked mine up quite a bit.
That's fine.
So, uh, it'll be ready nine o'clock tomorrow morning.
All right, thank you very much. Um. So would you ask Melissa to do me a favor? And not email it to me until Monday because Monday then I would come in and sign as preparer. First, I'm going to the monkey on.
All right, I got that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Barbara.
With the excuse.
Yep. Yeah, I don't know, absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Boy, that's all we nice to say anyway. Uh, next up is tax refunds.
A vote to approve the tax refund totaling seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and thirty cents.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Hi.
You sound you sounded reluctant here, Charlie.
Yeah, my name's not on here, so I checked every time.
You know, there is a former selectman whose name appeared on there more than once.
I'm sure.
Um, okay, selectmen's reports. So over the last two weeks, a lot of of my time has been spent on drafting the final report for the race grant, putting together that presentation this evening. One thing I want to point out to folks, it's a constituent concern and it's an ongoing one, but it's it's gotten significant enough so that I want to raise it publicly. Um, I've received several phone calls or complaints pertaining to watermill landing. Um, asking when it'll be move in ready. That's the the Calamar project. I am not aware of the site having any substantial work done this calendar year. Um, although potential talents, potential tenants telling me that the project development continues to take deposits from people and promise that few units will be completed. Within the next three or four months, whenever they're having that conversation with the prospective tenants. The the same promises made for well over a year. Um, I do not see how the units will be move in ready within that timeframe based on the lack of performance. It's still, they haven't had rough inspections, but it's still stick built inside. Out of a concern for our residents who have reached out to me, I've alerted the Department of Consumer Protection about the circumstances. Um, to move forward, DCP needs the consumers to file a complaint with the state. If anyone has had a personal experience in terms of, um. Submitting a a deposit and would like to file a complaint, please reach out to me. You're at my email address or stop in the office. I have the necessary documentation that needs to be submitted and I can help walk through the process. Um, and it. Alternative to that, you can reach out directly to DCP by emailing Pamela dot M dot brown at C T dot gov. The Trolley Museum continues to find creative ways to work towards their goal of redeveloping the museum into an even better living history museum. They're trying to participate in a program administered through the Department of Revenue Services called the Neighborhood Assistance Act. That would allow for corporate donors to receive a tax credit equal to their contribution to the museum. Uh, I've agreed to service the town liaison DRS for this project with the hope that the program may be available to other nonprofits in town as well. Program will run once again in the springtime. So if you're a corporate citizen, you make a five thousand dollar donation, you get a five thousand dollar credit on your tax bill. So it's effectively a Washington corporation. Um, earlier today, I had the opportunity to be a guest speaker with Park Hill Tenant Association. It was so nice to be able to visit with those folks again in person. Um, the residents asked some great questions, actually all almost exclusively around economic developments. Um, but also about services for seniors, COVID nineteen and a couple of other issues. Uh, the town will hold a second annual haunted highway on October twenty eighth, when we put tonight from five to seven P M at East Windsor Park. Last year, this was a very popular way for families to celebrate Halloween, uh, while observing COVID safety guidelines. We're excited to bring the event back again. It's open to anyone and this year there is going to be admission in an admission charge of five dollars per car. Um, that revenue will go towards youth sports and camp scholarships. Next year, we are seeing an uptick in in need for that. Um, East Windsor Social Services is asking for donations ahead of Thanksgiving this year. Um, they're helping, trying to help families in need in our community and they're still soliciting forty five turkeys. And a hundred and ten, twenty, twenty five dollar gift cards to local grocery stores. Anyone would like, if anyone would like to donate, please contact social services. Next weekend, March homecoming weekend for East Windsor Public Schools. They have a full weekend of activities planned for students, including two night soccer games. Next Friday, the girls varsity team will play at five fifteen and then the boys will play under the lights at seven thirty. I guess the girls will be under the lights too by that time. Um, the annual Veterans Day Road Race is coming up on November sixth. This year's race is dedicated to longtime member and past chairman Warren Wens, who passed away last year. Warren also served as senior vice commander for the American Legion here in town. Proceeds for the race go to scholarships, flags and veterans need. Pre about pre registration is open, same day registration starts at eight thirty. There will be a brief Veterans Day ceremony held at nine and the race starts at ten. There'll be cash prizes for the overall winner and for, uh, age brackets. Um, speaking of long term planning, the town is working on a master plan for town parks redevelopment. And a community listening session will be held on November tenth at six thirty right here, six thirty P M right here. Um, and lastly, the town has employment opportunities that are posted or will be soon posted. They include an assistant town planner or zoning enforcement officer. Ruth Calabrese has been promoted and we need to back though her position. There's a part time, uh, administrative assistant in the social services department. A part time, uh, senior site nutrition manager. An assessor's aide or an assessor's or an assistant assessor position. And a part public works part time maintainer. Anyone who's interested in any of those can send an application to Melissa LaBelle in my office. That's all I have. All right.
I don't have anything for tonight. I only had one, um, liaison meeting, um, in the last week, it happened to be last night, um, for the personal reasons I was in the chair then. Um, and I'll be meeting with Park Hill tomorrow, um, to catch up on what I missed and what I'm looking at next week.
About. Alan. Um, okay, so, uh. Planning zoning, it had a very light meeting and actually most of it, most of the stuff was canceled, but they are just working through a couple of special use permits. Then, so we were out of there very quickly, which was a. Which was a big difference because some of those meetings go on for quite a while. Uh, Monday, I was in the fire department, uh, commissions meeting. They covered a lot of grounds. They're pretty busy over there. Uh, one of the things that they were discussing was the. That they're, uh, in the process of buying a new pumper. And they had a gentleman there that was going over, uh. You know, how a lease would work and so they ended to lease that truck, right? It's at least all not like a rental, you know? Um, so they went over the financing for that and, um. Had a pretty good conversation about that. They also revisited the ordinance, uh. Uh, that they would like to draft for, uh. Fire marshal fees and they have pared it down to a bare minimum of, uh, charging fees only for. Basically, re inspections of businesses. So that's where they're gonna start with that. So we'll probably be seeing some of that work in the next few weeks. They also, uh, talked at length, uh, about opportunities to share some expenses, uh, related to the fire marshal. With, you know, beyond the vehicle, the town vehicle, uh, with warehouse points and they have been talking back and forth and are potentially gonna have an MOU between the two of them. Uh, to, to, you know, to. Basically, set the guardrails for that, so. Um, so it was a good meeting that they had. Last night was the pension meeting. Um, I was the last person to show up at the meeting, so I was, uh, the chairman.
Both of those statements are true, but not one because of the other.
Um, but it was, uh. Webster was he was there to talk about, uh, the pension and the four fifty seven and, uh. Uh, what's the other one? Oh, that, oh, that. And. All of them are healthy, all making, uh, significant gains for the year despite the, uh, downturn in the economy or not the economy downturn of the market. Uh, in September, so everything's really looking well there. They, um, signed a. Or approved an IPS, which is, uh, uh, investment policy statement, which basically is a protection for the. For the employees in the L P E V and the four fifty seven, four one, four one K, um. So basically, there's somebody looking as a fiduciary, uh, uh, for them at all the funds that are in there to make sure that they're. Performing as expected and and they are getting the best choices that they can get in their in their plans. So, um, that was a good step forward. And that, that's all I've got for you. Thank you, sir. Sarah?
Um, on October fourteenth, I did attend the veterans commission meeting and the group's main focus was on finalizing their upcoming November sixth road race, which Jason already touched on. Um, the Warehouse Point Fire Department Auxiliary will be hosting a pasta dinner the night before the race, Friday, November fifth. At the Warehouse Point Fire Department at eighty nine Bridge Street Warehouse Point. Tickets are ten dollars and can be purchased at the door. And dinner will be served from five P M to seven thirty P M. Last night, the Board of Finance met. Finance Director Amy O'Toole reported that tax collection is in a good place. Planning and zoning permits are over budget and park admission is at over fifty percent and rentals at fifty three, excuse me, sixty three percent. The board unanimously approved our request for an added appropriation of thirty thousand dollars for hazardous hazardous waste collection, which will be forwarded to town meeting. Although there was some discussion by board members that a need like this should have initially been funded in the budget instead of going back. Um, for a supplemental appropriation pretty early in the fiscal year. I'd like to note that this was the second meeting in a row that Dr. Tudren, superintendent of schools, was in attendance to answer any questions. And give an update on the Board of Education. There was some nice discussion back and forth between he and the board and I'm hopeful that there will be a good working relationship going forward. The Warehouse Point Fire Department Auxiliary is hosting trick or treat at the Haunted Horse Company at Eight School Street on Halloween, October thirty first. From four thirty to eight P M. Um, and just want to say this would have been our last Board of Selectments meeting in this term. Um, so it's been a privilege working with all of you and I'm really glad that the race is uncontested and I look forward to being here with you all for another two years. I think that. We all work well together and although we disagree at times, we all respect each other and I know that each of us has the town's best interests at heart. So. Looking forward to being back with you all again.
Nice closing sentence. Just, uh, one point on the added appropriation during the the budget presentation in the springtime.
Right.
Um, it was included as a recommendation for the Board of Finance to consider funding if the funding were available. And they opted not to do that. Um, I I included that in my recommendation to this board when we presented the budget and I included it again when we went to the Board of Finance and said, if the opportunity is here, fund it. So I'm I'm glad that we're moving forward with that.
Charlie. Um, I can add to your report that the Manchester Calamar facility is in the exact same state. No work being done.
Certainly one of them.
Yeah, so they're, they're in, whatever they're doing.
Um, you know, if they're in trouble, they're in trouble, but they're they're taking advantage of a vulnerable population with with complete fallacy.
Yeah, no one should be giving them a dime for for anything at this point. Okay, so I missed last meeting, so I've got, um, some stuff that goes back a little ways to report on. Um, I attended the Connecticut Water Company meeting on October fifth. Um, they reported that pure did authorize their, um, their rate increase of five percent. Um, they state that they haven't gone up in rates since twenty ten, so they will overdue for this. They also say that low income applicants can qualify for a fifteen percent rate decrease if they meet the requirements. Most town social services can assist applicants with this process. Anyone with a ninety day or greater delinquent water bill can enter a no interest payment plan with them as well, um, simply by calling, uh, the building department. Um, they also reported that work on North Main Street has been completed, uh, that depot hill. Um, going into Enfield and they, at this time, were saying they were gonna start, um. Water Street, which has already started. I can say I've seen that going on. Um, Police Commission, not a lot going on there. They reported that residents have requested again for a request for signs for no trucks on Morris Road. You often see these signs in certain towns that say per order of the selectmen. You know, trucks are requested not to use this road, but the police department maintains the fact that those are not enforceable. It's still a road. It's open for everyone to use. They do encourage trucks not to go down there and wish that they didn't. But there's really no way to enforce that. We could put up signs that state that, but again, there's no enforcement behind that.
We cannot be able to make that.
The traffic authority. But they have no interest in doing it.
Are they going to respond to the constituent?
They are and they have before. This is the second time this complaint has come before them, so. And I do know that signs were, were added to like the, the end of walking road that say, you know, gravel pit is this way with arrows pointing in that direction to help minimize that error. And then they also reported that below flying airplane signs were put up on Wells Road for Skyline Airport. Everything else has been touched on, so I'm done.
You, you reminded me of a point that I didn't make when you talked about the Connecticut Water Rehike. So we're in, we're in what's called energy season now. So social services is taking applicants for energy assistance, particularly for deliverable fuels. And this year, and I'm not really sure where the funding is coming from for it, but this year there is no asset test. So pretty much anybody who applies will, will qualify for heating assistance with the, the one caveat being an upper income restriction, but it's a high income restriction. It's like seven thousand here. So it's a, it's going to be a very easy process to apply and get approved this year because there's not much homework they need to do in order to improve them. But I just point out that it is getting cold and as people turn on their heat, there is a need for assistance that is, that is readily available this year. Social Services has that information. Okay, nobody has anything else? We'll move on to the second public participation. Are there any comments from members of the public who are here present? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
This one's taken. Well done.
Oh, thanks.
And respect to
happens we have a couple of guys who like chainsaws on our D P W service.
They cut it up nice and square on the top.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for, for noticing.
Other comments? Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Stop telling me twenty-three ratio. The only thing that I've noticed that we can't put signs up, but I think I've seen in other places the town has requested no trucks. Can you put signs like that? Even though it's no, no truck, no trucks requested, not to use trucks, you know, a request, not a order.
You can, but it
I mean, you can't enforce it, obviously, but
it goes back
Maybe just seeing the sign.
Right. The police's, their look at it is, is that you just add more signs, you add more signs, you add more signs and then people right, nobody looks at and then it devalues the ones that are there that are important. So and the, the expense of it on top of that, so.
That your only points, sir? Other questions or comments from members of the public? Is there anybody online who would like to address the Board of Selectmen? Seeing none, we will have an executive session. If I can have a motion going into the executive session, action may follow, but I'm like sixty forty.
A move that we go into a second session.
Uh, any discussion? And we'll include just the five of us. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We're in executive session at nine fourteen P M.